So we're gonna start the Whately School Committee Public Hearing for the Proposed Fiscal Year 22 Budget at 6:01. Okay, and the first thing is to approve the minutes of our last meeting, March 2nd. Do I hear?
Actually, you know, the first thing you have to do is the, it is the hearing on the budget. So you're gonna open up the hearing on the budget.
Okay.
You're gonna, we're gonna discuss, Shelley's gonna give a quick overview of the budget. Then you have any questions regarding the budget, then you close the hearing on the budget, and then you open the school committee, um, the business of the school committee, which is to vote the budget and do the minutes and such. Does that make sense? It just has to be very formal because it's a legal process that you do it.
Sure.
Okay.
So, do I have to get a vote for that? I'm gonna...
Nope, Shelley is just going to tell us what the budget is.
Okay.
She's gonna go through the, basically, in brief, what we did with the, you know, I think what Bob was trying to say to the, the select boards and the finance committees, that we've already discussed this budget several times, and then we went to them and discussed it as well. And then we're having a hearing now where we should have been kinda doing it when we did it with the select board and finance committee, because we're gonna discuss the budget again. Yet we've already discussed it before, but legally, we have to do it, it was posted in the paper, all this other kinda stuff. So Shelley's gonna do a quick run-through. Um, and then there'll be any questions on the budget, um, and then it shouldn't be that long. Alright, sound good?
Alright, Shelley.
Alright.
Okay, Darius, do you wanna share, or do you want me to share my screen?
I gotta set to go, I'll do it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so he's just gonna pull up the document that gives our short summary here, as Darius explained, we did already present in pretty detailed uh, presentation to the select board, so this is really just a summary for public tonight. Uh, so we built the budget for FY22 with a level service approach, so all of our existing staffing programs and services were replicated from FY21. Uh, we took into consideration any contractual obligations for teachers and IAs, there's a 2% COLA built-in, and then any step increases for anyone who's changing either columns because they've advanced their degree, or uh, anyone who's stepping on the salary schedule. We just lost you. There you go. Um, so then we take a look at increases for non-union staff, so that includes um, support staff, uh, secretaries, custodians, um, food service, uh, central office, principal, any other administrators. Uh, we look at those pieces, and then we analyze the non-salary accounts as well. So we look at a three-year history to see if any of our non-salary expense accounts need to be adjusted up or down, and we make those changes accordingly. Uh, and we also build in adjustments for operating-related expenses such as utilities and insurances. We also look at classroom sizes and projections of enrollment to determine if we need additional staffing for the upcoming year. And then we look at our revolving funds to see um, if those accounts that have been paying expenses in the prior year can continue to pay expenses with the anticipated revenues that we're gonna bring in. Um, so Whately does not have any new staffing, there are no major expenses for next year. Um, we're pretty much looking at salaries and wages being the primary source for our increase. We are looking at an increase of 2.5% over the prior year for a total general fund of $1,829,786. And we will use additional uh, grant and revolving fund revenue to fully support the budget, um, which is just over 2.2 million. So just to give you a little bit of a snapshot here, I gave you a chart just for historical information. Um, going back a few years, you could see what the increase has been. Last year, we um, level funded, uh, meaning that our budget matched the prior year, so there was no increase in FY21 in the current year that we're in. Uh, the prior year, the increase was 6.18%, and then in FY19, it was 2.5. Um, so just some historical data that I think is good for people to uh, see, just so they can see the change over the years. But pretty basic, you know, not a whole lot of changes in Whately for FY22. Um, and I'm happy to take questions if anyone has them. Okay. Yeah, I think we've all seen this several times now, and we're good with it. Now, we don't do the vote until later.
So yeah, at this point, you can say that there's no more questions, you'll close the public hearing.
Okay.
And then conduct the school committee business.
Okay. No more, if there's no more questions, we'll conduct, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, so now let's get on to the minutes from the March 2nd meeting.
So moved?
Uh, second.
Okay, all in favor?
I'm sorry, can I say one thing? I, I did wanna um, correct one uh, part in there. It is under unfinished business number C, or letter C, Maureen, um, when there was an update on the budget proposal, so it talks about Whately getting ESAR funds. Um, and the amount in there is wrong, it says about 38,000, so I just wanted to correct that for the record. Um, Whately will actually receive $85,841.
Eighty-five thousand, eight hundred forty-one.
Yeah, and we're using 30,000 of that in support of FY22's budget, so there will still be some funds remaining for additional COVID needs. So I thought it would be good to get that number corrected.
Then I'm gonna, I will incorporate that correction with Donna, and um, I think we can still approve the minutes now with that correction. And we've had, um, okay, so all in favor with that correction that Shelley said?
Yes.
Yes.
Maureen, yes, okay, all in favor. Okay, now we're on to public comment, and I, I know we have two public comments here. So Shelley, would you like to go first?
Yeah, sure, how are you guys?
Good.
Good.
Good, thanks. So listen, I, I, I really don't want um, to beat a, a dead horse with this whole um, anti-racism um, curriculum, but, but I do think that, you know, there, there are a lot of concerns with, with how one-sided um, it is. And I guess I will read what I was, was going to read. Um, I, I don't know if there was technical difficulty with the meeting last night. Um, but i- in, in watching the, the YouTube video, I, I was cut out, and a lot of the video cameras of um, the, the committee members al- also went off um, during, during my statement, so I wasn't quite sure what, what went on there. Um, but I do have a statement, and I'll, and I'll just, just roll with it. Um, so again, racism in our country is a problem, and I have great empathy for anyone who has personally experienced being judged or mistreated based solely on the color of their skin. I believe it is important for our children to be taught about racism, and how it is wrong to judge another person, or to mistreat another person based on the color of their skin, religion, sexual orientation, political affiliation, etc. These reasons are why I have an issue with the anti-racism white privilege curriculum, otherwise known as critical race theory. I do think that this curriculum does more to divide our country and our community around racial issues than it does to unite. The main goal of this theory, in my opinion, is to convince young impressionable minds that if you are white, you are inherently racist. Not one person to date has been able to answer for me how this ideology is not racist itself. Furthermore, if you try to disagree or oppose this ideology, you are not only racist, but the racist of the racist, the most uneducated of the uneducated, and the most unenlightened of the unenlightened. As I first stated, racism is a problem in our country. However, this curriculum is not the solution, and I fear it will only divide our community and country more. Furthermore, it oozes with a political agenda, and hence it's why it's being taught to our children at a younger and younger age, what some might refer to as indoctrination. In summary, my opinion of this curriculum is, is a radical, is a radically progressive ideology that inserts race and racism into every aspect of our lives, and will only continue to foster division, anger, and violence. Respectfully, in my opinion, it has no place in the elementary schools. Martin Luther King Jr. and his teachings, I am all for. He once said, "I have a dream that my four little children will have one, will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged on the color of their skin, but by the content of their character." Sadly, critical race theory teaches the opposite, to judge solely based on, on color. So, so that's the statement that I read last night, and in, in I guess to um, piggyback off of that, my concerns with this, this critical race theory is that it, it smothers all dialogue about the biggest pain point in our American history, which is, which is slavery and race. It essentially, you know, states that if you don't agree with this, with this white privilege curriculum, you're racist. Nobody in this country wants to be, be called a racist, and I think that that can intimidate a, a lot of people, and, and stifle um, in, in important dialogue about different, different, different opinions. Um, and to continue, I, I, I will say that I did find the, the comments um, of Lisa Gaylor, her, her statements from, from the teachers' union. I, I did find those, those, those comments quite, quite troubling. Um, I quote, "As educators, we have the platform to teach our students about racism, white supremacy, and xenophobia, and how to confront them in all their forms. As we see rising white national terrorism, we must be more vigilant in anti-racism." In addition, she urged about the, about growing the movement and having all teachers take the Black Lives Matter pledge. So my question to the school committee is, have you thought about teaching our children about other movements? In particular, the Make America Great Again movement. It is a fact that around 75 million people voted for President Trump in this last election. Therefore, it stands as a reasonable conclusion that we would have members of our community that believe this, that believe in this movement, just as it is reasonable to conclude that since President Biden won the election, there are community members that believe in the Black Lives Matter movement. Should not both movements be taught to our children, and then let them decide through critical thinking which movement they identify with? So in summary, I will try and give a very simple example of how I view this critical race theory curriculum. It is black and white. As a white person, you either acknowledge that you are racist and have white privilege, or you are the most racist of the racists. It is like saying that if you have a Black Lives Matter sign in your yard, you hate police officers. And if you have a "Back the Blue" sign, you think black lives don't matter. In my humble opinion, there's a whole lot of gray area in between that should be open for respectful dialogue. Thank you again for your time, school committee.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thanks.
Megan, do you wanna go ahead with yours?
Hi there, yeah, sure, um, I did not write anything out. Shelley is much more prepared than I am, like usual, so I'm just gonna wing it, like usual. Um, so a couple things that concern me, first of all, I couldn't get on the call last night, I was, I had a link, but it was saying I was denied from the call, so I guess it was just something with, I needed to get on YouTube instead, and that was just something I was unaware of. Um, so I had called today, um, and Donna had let me know that that was, that was a thing now, where you have to request to, to speak. Um, I mean, I, I'm, I've lived here my whole life, and if there's a town meeting or anything, anybody has the right to speak or anything, how, I, and I didn't request to speak yesterday because I didn't know what was going to be said, you know, and, and I think that there needs to be an option. Like, I think there was a town meeting on the football field one time, or something like that. But things are opening up enough now where I shouldn't have to request to speak at a town meeting in a, in a public forum like this to, to just have my opinion be heard, basically. So I think that there needs to be another route that this is taken, because when I couldn't get in last night like that, really, really was frustrating. Um, so then I go to the YouTube channel after the recording, I go to watch the recording, and I'm listening and listening and listening, Shelley talks for two seconds, her screen cuts out, everybody goes black, and there is not a chance in hell that everybody turn their screens off in the exact same second, like it had on that thing. So whoever has manipulated this video, somebody's gotta stand up for it, and everybody just kind of sweeping everything under the rug is getting ridiculous. It's getting ridiculous, like, who's the adults here and who's the children at this point? Um, so, so, so we're talking about this anti-racism thing, and I get it, it's a big thing, it's huge, it's huge right now all over the, all over the country. Um, some of the girls that had sent in a statement last night that was read, Annie Curtis being one of them, she didn't even grow up here. So, and I understand that she's got children that are going to be in school at some point, I know she's got two toddlers, I think. Um, but for, for someone to come in and speak about the past history of our school district like, like they know firsthand, I just don't think is, is an acceptable, an acceptable opinion. Um, I grew up here, I went to Deerfield Elementary, I went to Frontier from 7th to 12th grade. And some of the people that, that had spoken up, whether that be on the Deerfield Now Facebook page, or in wherever they're talking in, in these meetings and stuff, um, I, I've known them since I was eight and nine years old, and the portrayal, the, the way that they're portraying things is manipulated to be one-sided. So, in my opinion, we did not grow up being like, white privilege everything. Just because we had a primarily white school district does not mean we are racist, it does not mean we were terrible to children other than white children. We had, I know, in my high school class, we had three black kids with our, with our class. And honestly, I could talk to them, and I still talk to them every single day, and most, and most usually, I mean, from, from what I've talked to them before, they didn't feel like we had secluded them ever, or, or anything. So I don't know, it's just a concern to me that we're, we're making this such an insanely huge issue that reading, math, English, sentence structure, grammar, um, language, e- everything else doesn't matter anymore because Black Lives Matter and, and this, this anti-racism is all that matters now. That's all we hear about everywhere. Um, and it's just, it's just insane to me. I mean, school is school, and when I was growing up, my parents were the ones that taught me about heterosexual relationships, homosexual relationships. Like, this was something that we learned in home and our families. Um, and hearing that a 4th grade teacher is talking to children about um, transgender things and, and homosexual relationships and stuff like that, like, we'd never even talked about normal relation, like, normal hetero, heterosexual relationships in 4th grade. So I don't know why it's becoming a thing where we're just talking to these children younger and younger and younger, like, I'm just waiting for my daughter to go to kindergarten next year and come back with a whole paper that she has to write on, on just all these different relationships that she doesn't even comprehend in her mind. So we ha- we have to really take a step back and think, like, are these eight and nine-year-olds really understanding what we're talking about? Or are you just pushing this agenda more and more, and younger and younger and younger and younger? Um, along with that, this anti-bullying thing that we have been talking about for years, which is so important as, as parents, students, teachers, anybody in this district, anybody with kids, anybody growing up, it's, it's still happening. So what I see lately on, on Facebook and um, all the things, so Deerfield Now, Shelley had posted something about her, her thoughts, she did not give her insane, like, a big opinion. She said, "I would like to hear everybody's thoughts on this topic." And then, now there's an inclusion Deerfield group, an inclusion Deerfield group of, of everybody that's basically just pushing the anti-racism stuff. Screenshot-ing her, screenshot-ing her question to everybody, putting it over there, and everybody is bashing her. Now, is that, is that what we're trying to teach our children about anti-bullying? Because to me, that's bullying. That's bullying at another level. Whether that be, you know, whatever topic you're bullying on, that's still bullying. So if, if a parent wants to come in here and preach to you and have papers written up to you talking about how amazing they are because they love this anti-racism thing, look at what else they're doing, because these people are also obviously not, not following in line with this anti-bullying, you know, agenda that we've got going on, because they're doing it to just other parents in the district. And it's, it's just getting insane, like, I have to hear from, from Shelley, like, I feel like I'm being personally attacked now. Or, you know, do we need to move out of town if we speak our opinion because they're gonna come burn our houses down? This is ridiculous, like, it, it's, and this is what they want. We, we are white privileged because we're white. We're not allowed to say our side because then we're racist. And the fact that, that, that is something that's even happening in our world, it is just mind-blowing to me, and I, this is why, this is why this, yes, it's a topic of discussion, it's always been a topic of discussion. We've talked about racism all through our lives, we've talked about um, white, white supremacy and stuff. But I have sat and listened to my son's history teacher talk about white supremacy for hours and hours and hours on end, without ever bringing up Antifa and every other group that's out there besides the white supremacists. So, and I, and I've, and I've spoken with him before and said, "If you're gonna teach one thing, teach it all." There is no space for opinions when you are teaching history and social studies. This needs to be fact-based, and if you can't do that, then don't teach. Maybe history or social studies isn't for you. But anyway, I just needed to say my piece because I wasn't able to last night because I was denied entry to the meeting. So anyway, I think that was it. But I would really, really like somebody to go look at that YouTube video from last night, because that, if that is not manipulated, I mean, if, if everybody is looking at that and believes that that's the truth, everybody's in the twiway zone at this point, because it was so very obvious that whoever ran that meeting and whoever posted that to YouTube did something to that meeting. So that's all I'm gonna say about that.
And I just, I just wanna ask a, a, a quick question too, because when did the dialogue, last year before um, the pandemic hit and everything went virtual, these school committee meetings were open for, for dialogue. Like, you could, I mean, did, we had, we would have questions, and Mr. Modesto would be able to converse with us. When, when did the format change so much where it is just...
It changed after we were Zoom-bombed by some very inappropriate material in an open meeting, and after that, it was announced. Um, the information was out there uh, multiple times, every agenda would list the, how you would give your public comment, you could either submit it in advance and it would be read, or you can ask to have an invitation. But I don't know if you heard about that meeting, but there was a lot of...
Uh, now, now that you bring it up, Maureen, I, I, I do, I do recall that.
Um, yeah.
You, you know, obviously, a very inappropriate thing, but I, I, I just miss the, the dialogue, the respectful dialogue of opinions that are different. Um, in, in coming out of this pandemic where everybody has been quarantined and, and so isolated, I just sincerely feel like we're, we're, we're losing, um, you know, the ability to be empathetic to different people. And it's so much easier to be a, a, a social media bully in, in things of, of that nature. Um, and I just, I'm, I'm just very, you know, I'm passionate about this. I said, "I should have started, I should have started um, this meeting by saying, 'I acknowledge,' and Meg acknowledges and appreciates all the effort and time um, and hours you, you put towards the school and our communities. You, you have a no-win situation where you are trying to make everybody happy. Um, and that's just, that's just downright im- impossible. So we do acknowledge that, and, and, and we do appreciate it. We're just really concerned of where this, this, this path is headed for, for our children and, and for our community. Because if we start adopting in these, these ideol- these ide- ideological, I know that didn't come out right, but these ideologies where you're agreeing with it, or you can't even talk about it, it, it's just, it's just going down a, down a, down a scary road. Um, so I, I do miss being able to converse with you and being able to get your, your opinions on it, and to you know, immediately feel, figure out how we can bridge the situation and, and make it better for our community. I mean, it feels very kinda um, rigid and, and isolated to just read a statement and, and then that's it. Um, but I, I don't envy the, the position that, that you're in, but um, certainly, my opinions aren't meant to divide the community. Um...
I also have to say, I heard your whole statement last night, so I don't know what happened with the recording, because I came across live, fine, to, to me, I heard it.
Yeah, I also heard it, um, and I did appreciate that you spoke out. Um, I commend you both for, for um, sharing your opinion. Um, I will go back and watch the YouTube, and I've actually told other people to watch it too. Um, I thought last night's meeting was very interesting, um, both sides. I absolutely agree with both of you that social media is not the place um, for this conversation. Um, it's very heated between parents, um, but I do, you know, I don't think that this should be something that's political for either side, um, because it's really not. And I think Amanda made a really good point last night, it's about humanity, it's not about politics. And we really need to put that aside when we're thinking about this. Um, Megan, I also went to Frontier, I graduated from Frontier, um, and like you, I didn't blatantly notice racism. However, I do have friends um, of other races who went Frontier that did notice it. Um, and that's kind of what we need to teach our children, to notice those, those racism that aren't obvious. And I think that's part of what this is about. Um, we didn't see it, we weren't taught, and that's a problem, and that, and it needs to be taught. And if you're unhappy with the way it's being taught, then, you know, this committee is, is open, should be open to everyone's opinion. Um, and, and it really, you know, you have to look at the whole picture, like, the, the idea of this is good for our children, it really is. Um, it's, and it's just started, and I'm sure it's going to evolve. Um, and, you know, I, I can't see that this is a negative thing for our kids. Like, I went to Frontier, there were people who are racist there, not only students but teachers. I know you talk mostly about students not being racist. Um, but it happened with faculty too. Um, and I know some of these stories, and I know some people that were, were victims of it. Um, so I think this is, is, it's definitely a positive thing, and we really shouldn't make it about politics.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. So what is the um, Black Lives Matter pledge that the lady that spoke last night was talking about then? Because isn't that kind of like a political thing?
Yeah, I don't know anything about that.
I don't know anything about it either. It was the... It was on social media, so I, I didn't see all those.
So that was not from social media, that was, that was the school union District 38. That was the statement that she read from our Union 38 Teachers' Union. That was their statement. And you can go back and watch, I'm so...
Correct. So the association made a statement.
Lisa Gaylor.
Yeah, there's a, if you look at the Black Lives Matters um, website, there's a educational component about, and some of the stuff that we're working on um, has similar wording to, that you can find there, it's not all of it. Um, but there's some similar parallels, and so, you know, this, their association can do, we don't control that, the school committee doesn't control that, and the administration doesn't control that. You know, Ken, you know, they're signing on to um, the, some of the ide- the ideas from the educational portion of Black Lives Matters, which is very similar to some of the work that we are doing as well. And I think when you talk about what's happening in the curriculum, there hasn't been huge curriculum changes that have been done at Whately Elementary. This is the Whately Elementary Committee meeting, and we're at Frontier, we can talk about the Frontier, you know, separately. Um, you know, we're talking about culturally responsive education, and so basically, let me give you kind of an example of that. If you're teaching a science class, and you're talking about static electricity, and when, I think you can all remember the lesson that we did, where you rub a balloon against your head, and then you stick it to something, and you talk about the electronic, the electrical charges, and how that created happens. Well, if you have a student, a, you know, a black student or African-American student in your class, and you do that, it doesn't work. So if you're a teacher, teaching a group of, let's say, 3rd graders, static electricity, and that's your lesson plan, you're not having a culturally responsive lesson plan, because you're making one, you're singling out one person to be different, and the rest of the activity is everyone else. And so when you, uh, when you looked at, you were there last night, and you saw Sarah Mitchell and Kim McCarthy's presentation, is that the approach we're doing on this, okay, is that we are trying to make sure that as we write curriculum, we are looking at that so that we aren't excluding others. We aren't excluding, having lessons that are pushing people away. And that we're including everybody and recognizing everyone's background as we, as we create curriculum and so forth. So this indoctrination and that kinda thing, I think it's, it's, it's kinda, it's pushing an agenda. There's agendas on both sides politically, and I think that was kind of, you know, talking about that. Um, you know, we're not talking about that. We're, we're talking about, and so you can make extremes on both ways. Um, but the school is not. We are, we're talking about creating a curriculum that looks at all students in the classrooms, and makes all students feel welcome, um, and making sure that our, our lessons are diverse, that we are... Um, and making sure that our our lessons are diverse, that we are teaching books that are written all by white males. You know, we want to, you know, we wanna make sure there's diversity across the board in those things, and so you know, if there's examples that you can bring to me where that's where that's not being done, or it's being done in excess in one direction, that's the kind of data I need. The generalizations, you know, aren't true, we aren't teaching white privilege at Wheatley Elementary School. The professional development that was working with the teachers talked about it so that you could have an understanding of what it's like to be a single child of color in a room full of white students. And what you might be missing because of your own views and your own cultural biases, which are true. We have cultural biases, I sit in a position as a white male leader, and I'm told and reminded by it all the time of, you know, what advantages I have when I walk in a room, being a six-six male. Okay, and you have to understand those things, if you're gonna reach all your students in front of you, so that's kind of, you know where we're going at here, if you're, you know, I think, and I agree with Beth said, that clearly, if 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 there's concerns about that and examples of that, that needs to be brought to our attention that if we're we're going too far, we're going astray from those things. Okay, and so you simply send us emails, send us, come here, ta- talk to us here. Um, that's that's not the, that's not the goal of a culturally responsive classroom.
So thank you so much for those comments, Darius, and and also Bethany, I do really appreciate it. Um, I I will say, though, that politics has truly invaded every aspect of our lives. Whether it be professional sports, whether it be entertainment, whether it be the workplace, whether it be our schools, so to say that something either way, to your point, Mr. Modesto, whether it be right wing or or left wing, to say that that things aren't political, I think things are more political now than they have ever been in in my lifetime, and and you asked for specifics. So I will give you a specific, and this was pulled off of um, your website, the Frontier Regional School Cultural Responsive Teaching and Learning, it has since been taken down. But these are the words of the Director of Education, Sarah Mitchell. This work comes as a critical juncture, given the national focus of equality, social social justice and racism. As educators, we know that long term goals are accomplished through the lessons that we share with our students and the subsequent changes that they make in our worlds. This is how young activists are developed, this is how systemic racism is dismant- is dismantled. I am uncomfortable with the Director of Education saying that as a goal of this development is to i- is is to develop young activists. And I do cor- I do correlate that with a young activist of being part of Black Lives Matter, which if you do research Black Lives Matter, that is a Marxist organization that believes in communism and socialism and the destruction of capitalism.
So, but that's not what that statement says, and and being an activist is being an active member of your community. It's not saying, doesn't there, there doesn't say to be an activist in the Black Lives Matter movement, or an activist in any which way, but being an activist to change, because what our country's gone through this year, okay, clearly, there's systematic racism throughout the nation in in areas. Okay, and so to not to say that we want our next generation to address that, be active in that I think should be a goal of our school, we don't wanna be, we don't want our students to leave our schools and sit on their hands. We want them to be active participants.
Will you be hiring somebody to, um, like the position of um, Amanda to start with the 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 activism of the Make America Great Again movement, or is that, is that going to be part of the
Make America Great Again movement is a political movement.
And Black Lives Matter is not?
This, the the, the, the school district has not adopted Black Lives Matter.
But the Teachers Union is is urging that every teacher take the Black Lives Matter pledge.
Yep. It's, they they have the right to do that.
Okay, and I'm sorry, it's not, I am, I am very passionate about this, and and I don't mean to be argumentative. Um.
But I can ask, can I ask you the question that, so the issue I'm hearing is that I'm not hearing the, where the rubber reaches the road in the classroom, I'm hearing political. I'm hearing political statements about statements, you know, on the website, and that kind of thing. Whereabouts, we talk about this curriculum change, where is the curriculum in the classroom? Changing in what, and if we're talking about white privilege. Can that be, is that a healthy conversation? Is there an advantage to a a a white person, to a black person statistically, in in the court systems? You know, I mean, statistically, you can look at all this stuff, and there's truths there, so we shouldn't be discussing that?
So my point is that especially at the elementary school level, that the focus should be on reading, writing, and arithmetic and teaching our children how to critically think for themselves, to not start this white privilege conversation while their values and opinions are still being developed.
Conversation has not been had at Wheatley Elementary School. It's not part of any curriculum that we've approved through, you know, the, for the elementary school to be going through. Chris, has it been, in far as your knowledge, is that being taught in the elementary school? No, that's what, so I don't understand, it's being oversensitive to, again, the political spectrum of things, rather than the actual is actually happening to our curriculum in the classroom.
But didn't that lady last night, Amanda, she said, you're either racist or anti racist, that there's no in between, but then she's, then she's on Facebook blasting people complaining about the blue lives, the blue, the thin blue line flags in Deerfield, it's like, she's she's saying one thing, and then bringing all these gray areas into it, and it's just saying that I mean, I would never, I would never say I was a racist person, but that that doesn't I, like, I can say, I'm I'm totally not racist whatsoever, and she'd be like, well, you're white, so you're racist, it's just like this brainwashing of kids that you're saying, well, just cuz you're white, you're racist, is just like
But you keep on saying we're brainwashing the kids with that, but we're not doing that with the kids. That's why I wanna, I wanna be based on like, so you're bringing this into the school committee here, this discussion, we could have this discussion offline, but this is a school committee meeting. The operations in the school, so you know, if you bring a complaint forward, what I'm asking for, if you can give me the data of the complaint, then I can address the complaint, or you know, we can talk all evening about the back and forth of the of 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 you know, politics and how politics does happen. I absolutely agree with you that, um, Shelley, that politics does come into school. We can't pretend it doesn't, because it's 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 everywhere, but it is the school's job to try to push politics out and try to in in be mainstream middle. Um, and so, right, hearing all that, but I'm, what I'm trying to say is, when you come to read the school committee, you have to give me but you don't have to bring it to school, you can, you can read it straight to me, but if you're gonna go to school committee, which is also, you know, the bosses of the district. Um, you know, I guess I'm gonna need evidence other than hearsay or you know, feelings about the things, cuz I understand that this, it's this is difficult work, and it's also because of the spectrum of the work it gets people nervous that it's gonna go toward one way or go toward another way, and and I'm saying that right now, the children um, and there's no plan to, um to be exposed in the way that you're saying that they're being exposed to. It's gonna be great level and age appropriate conversation.
All right, well, um, I think we should move on though, but um, we really appreciate your comments and this dialogue.
And likewise, likewise, thank you very much for for the engagement and the di- in the dialogue, it is greatly appreciated. All right, we're gonna sign off now, have a nice day, guys, and I truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we're on to the vote for the budget, um, the final budget as presented.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so all in favor.
Shelley, do we, for the notes, you gotta make, you know, the, you have to actually say the budget you're voting, so you gotta get, say the number, uh, sorry, it it's like, the one thing they're gonna call you on is a technicality on a two million dollar budget, okay? Everything else.
On the Wheatley Elementary School fiscal year twenty-two budget. Um, total budget of one million eight hundred twenty-nine thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars. Um, which is a two per, two point five percent increase from the year before, or forty-four thousand six hundred two dollar increase from the year before.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Shall we take another vote, uh, make a motion and take another vote?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay, good. All right.
I just, I just wanna say something, I, uh, I s- I was listening to what Shelley and Megan were talking about. And correct me if I'm wrong, public comment is public comment, so maybe you can read something. We shouldn't, I personally don't think we should get into debate, Darius is right about, if they have questions or a problem, that send Darius an email, or his door's always open. But personally, I don't think we should be getting into a debate. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, Bob, I think you're right, normally, I I don't get, as I did last night, cuz we had a really full agenda, I basically said, you know, we're not gonna have debate. I, tonight, I felt, um, you know, they've been at a meeting prior, and they're not he, they're not, um, hearing an explanation to some of their questions, so I I overindulge, and if I, you know, took too much of your time, I I apologize. You know, I mean, cuz, right, you technically get public comment, and we we move on, but they wanted to there's a discussion there, and I don't know how we have it with the greater population, and maybe that's something that the school has to have a cuz not everybody, you know, they were kind enough to come on and have the discussion, a lot of people have opposing views, simply avoid those those discussions, so I, you know, I
Oh, and you gave some specific answers, so that was good for the public to hear.
But you're right, right, we gotta, you have to be careful, if we had a full agenda of other stuff, that would have been, you know, you know. And it's not even on the agenda, technically, you have to be talking about something that's on the agenda.
That's right.
And, yeah, the other thing, I thought Shelley was gonna bring up that they wanted to dedicate the scoreboard in the gym, and I thought she was gonna say something about that, and she didn't, but it's something, maybe, and maybe our next meeting, we should have it, if if we
So we should, we need to have it on the agenda with a vote, according to our policy.
I'm not sure what you're, what you were talking about.
Well, Shelley sent, uh, Donna through an email about, um not donating, um
Dedicating.
That's thank you, dedicating scoreboard to Stephen Keys and Gary Lawrence. That's what I thought Shelley was gonna talk about a little bit tonight, and she's the one that sent it in that if we could do that, and, you know, I don't
Are we adding a new scoreboard, or is it the one we have?
It's the one we have now, as far as I know, and um, I guess they wanna put a little plaque up there in memory of of Stephen Keys and Gary Lawrence, so and I don't have a problem with it, but there again, we should have it, maybe in our May meeting.
Yeah.
That we can have it in there and stuff.
Yeah, so we were gonna, um as part of the budget, we were gonna talk about, um I had proposed to Darius that we talk about expectations for full day pre K in the fall, but uh, we probably should table that to May, and maybe we can invite Amy Ziole as well.
Right now, we are, I I don't wanna misspeak, but planning wise, across the districts, we're planning for the full day next year. So, um, I just wanna make sure I'm not misstepping in Wheatley, Wheatley normally had a pre, did you have a half to prayer?
Um, the kids go home at one thirty.
Right, but year, the year before was a full day.
Full day, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so we are planning, we are planning a full day preschool next year.
And we have a very, very large list of interested folks.
Great.
The the other thing I was, that I brought up during last night's meeting was possibly that we could do in person uh, meetings.
Oh, yes, that's right.
So, I mean, I know it's not on the agenda, but I I just wanted to bring it up, maybe
Planning of, planning of meetings doesn't have to be on agenda, it's business, you can plan meetings anytime.
I I think
But I did, I I think after last night, listening to some comments and stuff, maybe we'll just wait till September and I'm I'm itching to get back, you know, I'm the oldest one in this group, and I've been vaccinated and stuff, so, and I hope when you have a chance to get vaccinated, but maybe, you know, we'll just wait until September when everybody feels safer and and we can go from there, I'd have thought it'd be nice, go ahead.
Yeah, it would be nice to have them in person, I think I might be the only one who's not vaccinated, um maybe I would be by then, but I doubt it. Um, the only thing is, we'd have to figure out the public comment and any other logistical issues, I don't know if it would be uh, filmed by FCAT, cuz if we're in person, we wouldn't have, be able to record it and do the live stream, would we?
So that's the, I, you know, I have it on my list to talk with the attorney about, about what's the legal requirements, because FCAT before, sometimes they came and sometimes they didn't, you know, I mean, there's kind of a these being recording the way they are has become a a luxury for the citizen, so to speak, in the sense of having to now having to go to meetings, they can turn them on, they're recorded, you know, that kind of thing, so um, I don't know if now we're responsible recording our own meetings. As I gotta find that out legally, cuz, you know, the, let's say FCAT doesn't come, do do we have to do something else, do I put a Chromebook in the front of the room with the camera, you know, uh, low quality, I don't know, um so
Yeah, so
I'll get those answers.
Yeah, we'll have to get those answers before we go in person, so seems like maybe May might not be the time.
Well, May's the next one, so, you know, we kinda, I've kinda have to know now, cuz I had to start preparing for it, but if, maybe let's not do May, and we can have a discussion, maybe in June, close the year out, it's usually a quick one. Um, you know, we could also do it in the gym. You know, I mean, you could do a big spacing if you really wanted to, we all sit at our own table kind of deal. Um, that's how we did Deer, we did Deerfield, so Deerfield did an in person one in December, and, um you know, it 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 was fine, except what I did is I was in charge of the technology and in charge of running the meeting, and technology went downhill fast, and I couldn't get the camera to follow, and then it wasn't picking things up, and so I think I was even caught swearing on film, um, so I'm trying to get the darn thing going, so, um anyway, so it was such a disaster, I'm like, I'm not doing that again, but, um, I think things have gotten better, technology's actually gotten better too, the Google meets have gotten better.
Hey, I hate to cut this meeting short, we gotta adjourn, cuz
A second.
All right, all in favor?
Bye.
All right, good night, everybody.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all for your support.